What's up, everybody? We're here watching our buddy Teo. Oh, what a sick spot. What a sick bounty.
He's gonna be up around the chip league now.
Oh, my goodness. This is also a jam. Wow, 7th place. So what we're looking at, this is a day two from the winner max series. It's a higher buy-in. I believe it's a big game here. It's at least 109 euros.
I think it's a 109.
This is from our friend, Diagburu, Mr. Teo from France. Hopefully, he scores it. That would be so sick.
You have the payouts in Discord, too. So we're down to what? 27? So he's got 1747 locked up. The next page jumps at 23. It's 2447 euro. 70k up top and 70k for second, obviously. But first, this gets all the bounties.
So he has already 5,000 euros set up, more or less?
He has, don't you say he's got locked up 1700, so 27, 20, he's got like 2900.
That's a hell of a game.
I think it's his new high score, I think.
Could be. Wow, the guy, man, spending so hard. The guy with 12 big blinds right now, 12.6. To our right, he had like 30 big ones and he's just like blasting.
He was talking on break. I think he said he's, it wasn't real clear on what he said, but I think, I think he said his biggest score is 2.9. So I guess that's 2,900. I think that's what he said. So he's gonna beat that one. Wow, gets her on the rover.
Ooh. Wow, that leaves a short stack with six big blinds. This is...
1300 bucks.
And it's euros. Oh, my goodness. I'm not sure about this call.
He's gotta worry. He's gotta play ICM mostly, yeah, right?
Yeah, because the short, short stack here has like 200 euros on it. I think it's a good lamp. I think it's very close. But...
Oh, he opened limp?
Yeah, he limp from the small, no, he limp from, but then openly, he completed from the small blind.
He's trying, yeah, I guess. I thought the guy would over limp, but...
I do believe that he has a massive edge over them.
That's floppy, me.
Overall, pre-flop, post-flop, everything.
Right.
I finally got my big screen.
Came today.
Came in. And it's a lot better, man.
How many inches?
34.
I gotta get a bigger screen. I'll listen to you.
Ah, you should.
I have a 27, 27 inches.
I was trying to stay in that budget, so I didn't want, I died 25 enough, like, to stay in my budget, 24-inch fit, and I didn't wanna go, spend a couple hundred more. I should've just did it.
Yeah, because you spent all your time looking at the screen.
I mean, I could always just bring down a TV, but like, I have it for yourself. I could just jump it up to my TV, probably put my TV on the desk, because I don't really look at it for anything else.
That's not very good, because...
The one in this room?
No, but a good gaming screen will, will keep your eye fresh after, like, the refresh rate is important. Everything is important.
I've got a high refresh rate. I got 144. Yeah, the TV, the TV, way more than that.
The TV, TV is probably 60 Hz.
Now, I buy good shit, man.
Most TVs are 60 Hz.
Probably 120, the TV, actually.
Oh, la, 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 la.
Well, my one downstairs has gotta be more, I think.
Wow, with the small blind, we might get some action. That would be so sweet. We're gonna have to, man, if the small blind goes all in and the big blind goes all in, puts us in such a miserable spot.
I'm snapped, Cole.
For 2,400 euros, I think. That's gonna, it would be so sick. Not happening.
You don't want no one to have his banner in this wall block. Did he fold?
Wow, chipping up. So we have 23 pairs left in this game, so they do on winner max. This is too small to go for.
This is just an easy fold, right?
Yep.
Oh, three bet. Is that in the three bet range?
Never.
No? 30 decks? Up your fold. Pure fold. King, Jack. That's the thing, too, like, you start getting this deep, you just keep, don't have a lot of chips, because the longer you go, the more, I mean, the bounties are just condensing. They're just, everyone's are getting, so you're always gonna have chances at it, even if it goes to someone else, but so you're gonna have a shot at it if you have the most chips.
Big sweat. Oh, any buzz. And we hit the brace?
A good hour.
Going quite well.
Yes.
Fucking hell, man. We have a hell of a sweat.
What?
We have a hell of a sweat.
Yeah, yeah. And also, yeah, sorry, but not sorry for stalling, because, you know.
Bro, bro, I hope you get first place, man. Take your time, stalk him, do whatever you want. Man, the guy to your right is such a fucking punter, man. He's the scariest player on this table.
Yes. I was really afraid with the ace queen. I was like, if he shoves.
The, but, you know, small blind didn't get involved. You would've had a sick spot with the, they both went all in. Ay, 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 I don't know what's the best play. It feels like you're playing for 2,500 euros.
I snapped it.
Yeah, but you have 30 big blinds and you're in like the last 10 here, like...
Yes, yes, that's the...
The tough spot.
Like, the, the guy with ace, when I had ace six of, of diamonds in the small blind, in the big blind, and the guy who was there, the Papa Noel, this guy, with 1, 1K, 300 bounty, each of 15 bits. I have 20, and I was like...
Ooh.
I can't call. I cannot call ace six, I think.
No.
So I folded, but the, was the artist and the night, for sure.
So did you say this is a new high score for you now?
Uh, yes, it is, because now we're at 2K, 500, plus the bounties, so that's my highest score ever.
Nice.
Very nice, man.
And going for final table, for sure.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to stall like a motherfucker again when the timing is right, because now the page jumps are more than 1K.
Ooh.
Which is retarded, and it's the PKO, right? So...
Yeah, the, the bounties are like irrelevant at this point.
Um, maybe not, but the...
Almost.
This guy, the 200, yeah, it's irrelevant, for sure. The others, I mean, yeah, you win 500 bucks.
Yeah.
And because they have a lot of starting bounties, so I don't remember exactly the, the comparing odds method.
It's 5% for starting stack for bounty.
Yeah, starting stack. But the...
We're far from that.
Right?
Yeah.
But yeah, it's going pretty well. Already my deepest run in a day three. I only two. The, the king three was so, so good. I was like, okay, I have to call with king three, fuck that, and full, full max. Not full. I was like, okay, if this motherfucker has aces or a king, I'm gonna spread, spreading tiers. And I wanted to stall again to not letting off the hook. I go, he snapped. But yeah, I'm not going to shove or doing some retarded stuff with the nuts. Don't worry.
Yeah.
Yeah, he didn't have anything. I mean, he would, I don't think he folded an ace or he just had no...
No, no, no.
Yeah, nevermind.
But yeah, okay, I'm going back to it.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Let's see. I'm gonna get in this. I think I'm gonna fire. I think I'm gonna play when it's gonna run late tonight, but...
Oh, my God.
We're gonna play another 1650. Where is it at? I think it's already been running an hour. Are you out of ACR?
What?
Are you out of ACR?
What do you mean, out?
Broke?
I gave, I sold my money to...
Galen?
George.
Ball and tone?
Yeah, he wanted, well, he actually needed it, so I just gave it to him. Then he paid me. Tomorrow, I'll play again on it. Sometime, someday, one day.
I think you could make money on there.
For sure.
1650s are pretty soft.
Ah, yeah, 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 another bounty spot. Men race, men race full, I guess.
I haven't seen Kelly in a while.
Yeah.
Guess I shouldn't play. I end up watching more than I play lately, too.
So I believe with the singles paid, we can see that.
Yeah, Jack's nice to have. Block source continues.
I think this is a fold. The guy left to act could wake up.
I mean, it sucks, because like, I mean, it's probably a hand it's supposed to call, but you're behind, like, all of his aces right away. It sucks.
I don't think it's a hand you're supposed to call with ICM here.
Uh, maybe not. Yeah, you're probably right. You're probably right.
No, this guy's like a time bomb, so it's just a question of time before he does something stupid.
Fucking Jack, you think that's in there? Like, she makes it enough, just enough better?
Nope.
No?
No, because if you call and lose, like, half of your stack, it's fucking terrible.
Yeah.
The 10th place is worth a lot more than 600 euros. Like, look at him, like, he's going for it.
Whole 1,200?
Nope, you get half of it.
Okay, it's young, play PKs. I don't really, I don't even know it.
Half of, half goes on your head and you get half.
Oh, right, right.
I'm not even sure if this is an open.
I was gonna say, just fall, open fold this, right?
Yeah. Depends on the blinds. Are they gonna defend enough? Are they gonna play well? I think it's really close. But with ICM, I think...
Maybe he's playing on call. He's gonna call off versus maybe the nine bigs and fold if anyone else gets involved.
Nah, I believe he should just fold, because he's gonna get stuffed on and he's gonna be in shit spot.
Yeah, I mean, I would fold, too. I wouldn't do it.
But he does have a big stack and the opponents seem to be overly passive right now, like, they don't defend, they're just...
He's gonna call off the nine bigs here, right?
Hmm.
I mean, you can't open fold if you're not gonna, if you're gonna fold the nine, I don't think you can play the hand. And now he's gonna, now he wants to flop to set, get this fucking guy's chips.
This guy seems to be decent. Yeah, I didn't like that open very much, but it's so good.
Sometimes it just gets thrown. It's definitely, like, gotta be in the bottom range.
Is the, the final table six-handed or it gets more players, like, eight, nine? Who knows?
Pretty good question. This is winner max. Anything can happen.
Yeah. The thing is, i- 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 when you open the fives there, do you call this 12 big blind stack?
No, you don't.
I think, no, you don't. If you saw, okay. But he has a big bounty. 1.8. What do you guys do here?
Just call?
And just call, I want to. Let's look at flop.
Ah, it's easy to pay.
Is it your time bank?
Trying to ladder, bro.
Okay. I thought...
You don't need time banks in... Sit and goes.
I play 1650 two days ago?
660. Be a good boy.
I'm always a good boy.
Yeah, I passed on the 1650. I opened up a 330 instead.
Could have a pretty sick spot there. Do it. Oh, my goodness.
But luck us.
Good fucking Lord Jesus, hallelujah. May our in Jesus be our savior. May our in Jesus bless us. For we...
Is that a page on?
There is, there is, but he can still make it.
Two way.
Yeah, I don't think he...
Well, he's on the page on bubble now.
So I think we're ahead of the original shover, but hopefully they don't wake up from the blind side. This guy needs to fold, okay? Have a flip. Oh, yeah! Can we touch it? Oh, my goodness. Jesus fucking Christ.
He's gonna have to put up another... Do we have to close the stream and come back or just wait?
I guess we'll just wait.
Ice one, Teo.
Jesus.
Double trouble.
I don't do it.
We've been blessed by our in Jesus.
I feel like, I guess, the, the, the levels must've just went up too, or you'd have more chips, uh, more big blinds.
Yeah, they keep going up.
So, and then, that, he also went on a ladder when he busted him. He hit the ladder, because they were right on the ladder bubble.
Oh, yeah, it seems. Pretty secure. If somebody opens, I think he has to put it in.
So, let's see.
Maybe it's just a call.
17, so that's 30, he's got 34 on it locked up.
Yeah, I do believe it's a, probably a good jam, but I like calling here sometimes as well.
5,200 so far.
Can we touch it? Really, please? Fold your two big blind, good sir. Come on, good sir. You don't want none of this. You sure don't want none? Come on, move on. Lock it.
Who's in the tank? Double trouble? Oh, no, the guy with the, okay, yeah. I just cleaned desktop. Which mine looked like that.
That I'm just going to put it back on the, on the table and on the screen.
All good, bro. All good, bro.
Ah, it's fine.
It's fine?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks, looks good.
That fucking double up, another double, yeah.
Six spot, man.
Nice not to have to sweat it actually, he just smashed it right on the flop.
Yeah, 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 but you never know, I'm never happy to, to smash because you, that's when karma hits, okay?
That means still a little bit of a sweat, but you sure feel a whole lot better.
Did we just saw seven three off limping from the small one?
Table open now.
It's fucking terrible. Fifteen left, let's go, man, we have it, chips and everything, and this is a six spot.
It was just like a two hundred and fifty K or five hundred K or?
I, it's a million, million guarantee.
Really? I think it's a million because.
It's called.
Was a million.
W series million.
So, yeah, half of that's in bounty, so it's like a five hundred K.
Ah, yeah, 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 sure, sure.
It's pretty sick, man, he's, he's getting, he's getting the good cards at the good time, man. That's pretty sweet. Jesus. Hopefully we get action from one of the blinds, that would be pretty sweet, oh yeah, that's like perfect. Like if they have a good ace blocker here, like ace stand off, I think they're supposed to jam. They have a hand like King Jack suited, I think they're supposed to jam, I don't know about ICM though. But at Chippy V would be. But they do have some jams, they, none of them found one. We're just chipping up, man, this is reckless. He owe the reckless machine.
This fucking fish. King nine opens, gets three bet from the small blind, I called four bet. He calls. Small blind ships it. I just wait, tag, call, and he calls with fucking king nine. I got aces, the other guy's got queens. I don't even hit, never fucking straight. On a queen, so I was losing a matter of what, but what the fuck? Fuck, it's so annoying.
Welcome to the micros.
Micro stakes, welcome to micro stakes.
It's better than lending though.
Now I just wanna take the rest of the day off and fucking make dinner tonight. Like in a guy with queens too, the small blind, he's such a face, the guy opens. He's, he's like, I knew, I had him on the hook too, the guy opens uh two point two, he three bets from the small blind at five point five. Like, you know, it's a super strong hand. Or I got, I know I got him, his chips going in. And then the clown with king nine decides to just go, you know. Or six bet. Four bet, call four bet. At a five bet.
Do you see the page jumps again?
Yeah, why, we wanna know.
Fourteen.
It goes thirteen is the next page up, I think.
Yeah.
It's in this, it's in this quarter.
How much is it now? I can't move.
Fourteen, you're right, it's forty-seven, it's almost forty-eight hundred, basically forty-eight hundred.
Yummy.
And then sixty-seven at eleven.
And then he has like at least more than one thousand five, five hundred and mountains.
Eighteen, eighteen hundred.
That's on his head.
Yeah, so you won just as much, right?
This is probably a spot he should. This is an open probably. But we're not happy if they should, their big blind shoves. Becomes a fucking nightmare if the big blind shows.
Well, if you can't call the big blind, you don't want to help. Big blind's got eight point five, right? Is that the big blind?
It's nine point five total.
Nine point four.
So it would be seven and a half more, it's not that expensive, i- i- the problem is if we lose the flip. I believe this is a fold, this guy wants, right on the money on the page um bubble. I think this is a.
Yeah, so we should be really tight. If you find attention.
Yeah, fold it, man.
Just type the, I don't know.
Yep, 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 yep.
I don't know what the fuck to do. Pretty good fucking hand.
No, man, you, you're, you're seven big blinds there, you sixth place, okay? So he has to stick with these chips, he even like he moved, he lost a hand, he's now fifth. This is how much his stack is worth, he's playing pretty damn well, from what I see.
I'm just, I'm just talking it out, I'm trying to learn.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, I think he's like rocking it, I think like earlier on in the game when there's no ICM, you could never pull here. But here. Six spot now. I really like the fold. Stop playing with your nose, George.
I'm not playing with my nose.
I can't tell.
It just uh played with my team, it'd be.
Wow, chips come falling from the sky. You know, man, when you ally skills with. Like, every, it's not luck, it's everything happens like perfectly right now, it's, everything is very smooth. The last king tree we had, we got super, super value. I believe this is a check. So he doesn't have very many aces pre-flop, I don't think it's, it's like an action killer card for a nine or a four. Six three, gotcha, okay, see, everything is going pretty smooth, six three off. Defended the flop, I don't know. Pretty, pretty wide call, I think. You get to call gunshots like this, you usually, oh, six pot, he needs to open. Usually you need to open gachas for sure.
I mean, that's bottom range, that's bottom range for Chippy V, like. Ace two, I don't even open ace two off from the button, to be honest.
Oh, this is an open, you got an ace blocker, you blocked the reshove, you're trying to.
You have to open.
We have a snowball effect.
Worst age you open, so it's not like.
The adjusting you're doing is opening every ace and just leaving some, I've heard it from Nick this. When ICM hits, you open all the aces and you leave some uh shooted stuff out. As an adjustment.
Well, we have another easy spot.
Twenty-two's. Is there none this week?
You mean the double reduce?
Yeah, I don't, it's gone.
Is it? Let me see.
It is no more, that's, they ran them for about two months. Maybe longer, but I mean, I noticed it for about, about two months ago, it's, I don't say it now, it's gone. Oh, here it is. Never mind, I was in the wrong filter.
Yeah, you had on, you went on micro and lows, but.
I went to high, actually. I thought it was in the, at the top of that, for some reason. That starts at hour. I think I'm just gonna play this fucking bet. Ooh, fifty-five hours, fifty K.
It's the one that uh Lu played.
Yeah, I didn't do so well on that. Which only an hour left? I'm sorry, it's three thirty.
What do you think of this Louis?
Easy four.
Easy four. Ace nine, should it, are you calling?
I'm trying.
And I'm two tables, let's go.
Add another page up then, okay?
Yeah. What? Amount of this?
Our eleven, next page jump is sixty-seven hundred dollars. One more bust out.
Well, seems like we're in position on a chip leader, so that's good and bad at the same time.
Uh, no, we're not in position, we got, he's on our left.
It's on the right, he's all in right now.
Sixty-one big minds on our left.
Two simply, two big stacks.
Three good people, the guy is.
Yeah, with the guy on our left, it's a terrible seat.
Yeah, it's a, you got to be really tight, you know.
You absolutely cannot do anything, this is like the worst seat in the, in the tournament.
Handicuffed. Handicapped.
This is where you need to get the big hand and win a big pot, so they can't run us over.
That's a good idea.
He's in pretty good shape, even in this tough spot with the deep stacks to get a five-figure cash at least. Because there are a lot of other short stacks that are in bad shape too, right?
Thing I mean, we're going for the win.
Four or five. Yeah, I'm right. But I mean, worst case scenario, if you don't get anything to play, it does have a tough seat, like you can't really be creative.
At this point. I guess what?
It kind of pretty much is at the mercy of the cards right now. Good screen name. I am so fucking weak. This is as bad as what I wanted to give myself. Who was it? Two cards. And one asshole. I was gonna use something like that, I forget. Three chips, two guards, one asshole or something. LP or you're not working again. I see you lighting up, but you don't hear anything.
I'm not saying anything.
Ah, your green light was flashed, I thought you were trying to talk.
He's listening to music.
Oh.
Can you guys hear it? No?
No, I can't.
Yep, easy fold.
Well, I don't know. I mean, the big line's not gonna want to squeeze much, right, to fight the other big stack. Is it worth you trying to see a flop or not?
They have not seen it. They they've been three betting each other like madness.
I thought we were suited to. I just realized it was offsuit to last second.
This is close. It could be a jam, but I don't think you have fold equity, and then there's so many short stack everywhere. Thank you just for here.
We also have relatively big bounty show.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's really close.
Oh. It's not fold.
Do we go with like eight, seven, eights from the previous spot?
No.
Not even with sevens?
No.
Okay.
Eight?
No.
Not even eight?
In this scenario, I would fold nines, probably tens as well.
Louis, what do you think of this?
Open, call the small blind? Hold to the big one?
Sure, the small blind is a start that call.
Small five doubled up. That sucks. Should be good. Should get away with it.
Do we call this guy Louis? No. Oh, nice flop.
Yeah.
That's too small. You wanna charge, yeah. Eight.
Went too fast to this.
No, it's fine. Maybe an ace, a five?
Unfortunately.
Eight four. It's a fold if this guy sells. What do you think, Louis?
Easy fold.
Easy fold, yeah. I go with nines here, personally.
No, I think you should fold here. No, don't do it.
The guy's open is super wide, right? He's stuck. He's gonna call wide.
We have no fold equity. We have two thousand euros on our head.
Yeah, I'd say you don't have enough. You don't have as much volume as you would like.
Don't do it! Oh my goodness, he does it! No!
He's gonna call with overs. He's not. He didn't snap.
Oh my goodness, that was such a...
I mean, he must have been stone cold bottom of range. Or he doesn't know how, why he's got a call. That was dicey.
You want to shove here with like an ace blocker, blocking calls. Without blockers, it's very spicy. Chippy V, this is a very good jam.
Right.
With ICM, wow.
If you read sort of...
At least the ace are king, right?
All the pairs.
In your hand. I mean, I think there's very little difference between like sixes and nines, honestly.
That's a big one.
Huh?
I think there's a massive one.
Well, there's a lot of what they're gonna call is still just gonna be two overs. I mean, nines, is it gonna be have some pairs that are gonna call?
No.
But basically, sixes and nines.
If you have nines, you're ahead.
There's between nines and sixes, right?
If you have nines, you're ahead of half of the bases or more.
Right.
If you have sixes, if you have a seven, you're not happy.
So he's got less. Yeah, he's only got three ounces to his six.
So what is the... It's like his three bet, his opening of this guy, Eric Rai, is thirty-nine percent. And his VPIP is forty-four, right? Yeah, he's three bet six because the hat is a bit different. Yeah.
That's a build-in hot on when a max LP?
No.
I don't I don't think so. It's a hold the manager, but it's like some...
So we see how boy position, middle position, is that how it's set up?
The graphic had, I think it is.
I think I'm... I thought it was set up by position. That's why I thought it was maybe just a win-max thing, but a max thing. I thought it was just three pips from those positions. They're all kind of high. Wasn't really sure what I was looking at. Get a fucking bust. Bust down somebody. I've got an all-in down here.
Oh, you should not open this one. You have too much rejam stack. This is very marginal.
Yeah, I agree. King nine maybe. King ten for sure, right? Definitely gotta tighten up a bit.
What happened on the other table on the all-in? He folded for life?
Then he didn't get called. He jammed it. He jammed a lot on the flop. I didn't see it.
Yeah, because this fifty-four, big blind guy should be opening, opening very wide, almost any two or not.
You got the king eight through, huh?
Yeah.
That's nice. Twice when you pick up the blinds with that, that's for sure. But it's a little risky, I think. It's a little it's a little loose. I'd at least be able to make a straight, you know? And the flush. And king nine probably.
Yeah, it's any two for this guy, big water. Big, big water, so.
Did you shark scope anybody at his table? See if he's like crushers? Did you shark skip? Anybody at his table? See if you're like crushers? Let's see, I can do it.
I can do it too. So do the, do the right table. Or do you want, do the left table, Cap, and I do the right? He wanted.
The right, huh?
Yeah, be water.
I can't see. You can't see anybody's names. They're all covered with his heads.
There's no heads now. On the right, okay.
Yeah.
Coral is going to, because he is watching the table.
This guy, Be Water, is a very good player. Fifty-two, fifty-two percent ROI. Average take forty-two dollar, forty-three dollars, forty-three euros. And profit sixty-five thousand euros. Let me see the rest. Teams. Items. Yeah, I mean, versus this player, I don't hate him. I hate because from, from, yeah, but his start are also really wide.
I can't, like the double trouble. He should have busted with his sixes.
But you should shouldn't have any track or anything because you don't have to lose anything, basically. You only have to win, to win. And this guy, I'm so weak, I can't find, I can't, I can't find him. I'm so fighting with. Okay.
See you. Next break or Michael.
What's the guy's name on your right there?
Yeah, and he's right. Eric Cry.
Who?
Eric Cry. Let me say, I will start strong. I'll be crying. Yeah, he's a crasser too. He has fifty-six thousand euro profit and forty-four percent average ROI. Average stake seventeen, seventeen euros, so like twenty dollars.
Which is ability up at like ninety something?
Yeah, eighty-seven in mind. Eh, E W, E H, W O N, call. He's hidden as well. Did you hear? This guy requires a good player and basically. A Coca Channel is also decent. He had a really big score. Yeah, he's a really good player. Coca Channel as well. He has like one hundred eighty-five thousand euro profits. So the good players are these, these guys, Coca Channel and where else I? And Eric, Eric Creed, Eric Creed and Be Water.
Ricky Thorne, I believe we should, yeah, take call. Action Killer River. I think we should be good. You should check a lot and I've lots of give out there.
Oh, we lost it, huh?
Yeah.
Let me get rewarded over the nineteen. Which, oh, gets a double even better.
So do it.
Oh shit. I think he's waiting to see if someone busted the other table.
Yeah, there is action on the other table too. Wait, wait, wait. Use your time banker, raise to like eleven, not all. Yeah, like this. Give all the back in.
Okay, short stack is, short stack is in. On the right table.
Get him out. Get him in, get him out. He got by the big stack and so now he might just get it through. How does fifty-four bigs not call? Like any two, basically? He must have some real shit.
Oh. Oh my god.
We got action here. Who's at risk? Guy, I can't read. The chips blending in with the felt.
Everyone's at risk.
Oh, he got it. The guy, twelve o'clock.
Yeah, five big blinds. And then four big blinds and the big blind unfolds. And then it was four seven off.
Come on.
Seven, no.
Ooh.
Fuck you Dylan. Got that tag in there quick. Did we shark skip that, dude?
No.
You did, you did.
I can't see their names.
Pretty terrible.
It's awful.
He doubled up the short stack.
I mean, you can go wide, but not so wide.
Devon, I just think on the do it there. You gotta have at least one, like, you know, you wanna do king two or something, queen two?
Yeah, you're probably.
Maybe even like that high, but come on.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh. There's a big stack discrepancy on this table. I just noticed it. It's gonna go all in every time now.
Yeah, be what?
No, because the other guy, a couple of days ago, jammed, open jammed like four, he had like four point four bags that he mocked.
Yeah, but he, now he can just pressure everyone into folding.
Yeah, sure.
And he's pre-rolling against the big one.
Yeah, I mean, I think he could have called just about as well on that spot because he's not at any risk, like, not like at all. He just run that fucking table down. So he loses chips.
I think he should fold this one.
Queen three?
Yeah.
Yeah. And you wanna conserve your chips now. I mean, you try limp into the guy jams, you just gotta follow. If he raises, you can't even defend if he raises, right? Like usually you can limp call this, but you can't even do that now. I suppose there's a world where you could open jam, but I don't know. I wouldn't do that though. It sucks having a three. The queen eight suit, would you open jam queen eight suited?
Nope.
I think you could. Did he just complete the big blind here? Or I keep clicking the wrong screen. These people value that marginal made heads.
Oh, we had a pay jump.
Ice.
Gonna have a couple of pay jumps real quick here. One big, two, two, two stacks under two big blinds. Oh, yeah. That was a pretty big punt. Was it twenty bits? Oh boy, that's bad because he opens another size. That means he has a hand he's gonna go with. Oh my, with the short stack here, this is a fucking disaster. This might be a call. Jamming is never gonna be wrong, but it might be a call. Because if the other guy rumbles. Oh my god.
They're playing our cards face up with his range now. And it's a.
Yo.
I've tense, one time have tense.
Oh, he folded.
Pretty sweet.
Every time you can avoid a fucking shit, a showdown, it's great, right? At this point.
Hey, what's up, George?
Hey, morning. So I need, I need ten minutes. I send you a zoom invite. Because Max is always joining and zooming because he needs his handy and his computer. So I will send you a link in ten, eleven minutes. Okay?
Okay.
Perfect. See you soon.
Oh, I meant to look at the next page jumps, what, nine?
There's gonna be a page on every time now.
Oh, it's nine and then seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. So we go from sixty-seven to ninety-four at nine, nine and eight at ninety-four hundred. And then it goes to thirteen, eighteen, twenty-five, thirty-six, fifty.
Wow, yeah.
Seventy-one almost for first and second.
Wow.
He's playing great too.
He's a fun.
You got two super short stacks here. Nine and a half, two, three really short stacks at this table.
He's on Louis, King, King ten here, King Jack, what's the?
Never in a million years, man.
My calls up. Not even King Jack.
No way.
No, you see these, George, you see these stacks at this other table, two point one, two point one, one point five, like I'm, you can't play. You gotta just sit on your hands.
Flesh, there we go.
You're right.
You pay jumps, that's a lot of money. At this point, I think.
Yeah, I haven't seen that. The guy had the point something.
A jumps doubles his money. He's got sixty-seven now, seventh is thirteen thousand.
Hmm, yeah.
Not our page jump.
You just said they just knocked two out?
Yeah.
So how many's left? Eight, two, three, four, five, one more jumps, another, one more jump goes to thirteen thousand, he just doubles his money.
Wow.
Yeah.
And there's a one point five, two big blind stack there, so it's pretty sweet.
Olivia zero isn't this guy a football player? Olivia zero, I think he's a football player, if he's the real guy. Let me, a soccer player, let me set scheme.
What the fuck? Ain't fair.
Well, calling with three, seven, I don't know.
Mr. Olivia Giroud is a football player?
Sure if, his name is Olivier, there is a player called Zero who plays in the. Yeah, Olivier Zero, it's, it's, it's his name, he's a football soccer player of the France, of the France national team.
Pretty cool.
But I don't know if he's this guy.
Hey, you might be a fanboy, right?
Yeah, sure. Could be though.
Fold, 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 fold. Take the page up. Don't do it. Double your money, get one more bust out. It's not like. Oh man, let's go. Nice. You know, he ain't sweating the money, he bunch first. Would you, would you jam King, Queen there, RP?
I don't know.
Not me. Much money on the line.
Another page jump.
Ice.
Final table.
Good luck, man. I'll have a good, good seat to it.
So what are we looking at now?
Everybody's left seven, right?
Yeah.
So he's got thirteen thousand, uh, let me be completely accurate. Thirteen thousand, one sixty-one euros. The next page jump goes to eighteen, four, twenty-five. Uh oh.
He's taking screenshots again.
But he froze for a second. Got disconnected.
This guy something has a strong range because the big blind is one point eight.
Oh my. I guess the best would be if he opened, yeah.
He didn't even think about it. This is, I mean, this is pretty much all you could do. I don't think you can fold jacks, right? Like you just don't get to fold. Yeah, I mean, I, it's gross though with that short stack there. But you gotta play, I guess.
Now the guy opens like way too much, so it's good. He's exploiting him hard.
Yeah.
The guy's experienced also, he's a good player. I set him.
Yeah, he's supposed to open as much as he is, I'm sure. I mean, he's got the big stacks. Open fold when you don't have it, open call when you do. Here we go. Tweet for this bust out. Watch him get involved, that would be.
Oh my god.
Get involved. Alright, so. Next page jumps twenty-five thousand.
So he's got eighteen right now?
Yep.
Wow.
Plus his bounties. The bounty seem off to me because typically. The bounty is almost equal to first place money, isn't it?
Yeah.
Like when first, aren't the values usually close to the same amount of money?
Yeah, usually first and second are the same.
There's about twelve thousand dollars worth of balance at this table, it looks like. It's not adding up to me.
It's on fourth, I think, but.
Yeah, he's been DMing me, it's funny this morning, you know, that guy we were talking about yesterday, it's been annoying me and poker coaching.